Good evening and welcome to the regular legislative meeting for June 18th, 2013. First item on the agenda is a presentation from Dan Marsh, the Director of the National Development Council, concerning a possible transaction structure for the new Public Works Yard. City Manager, you want to say something before I turn the floor over to Mr. Marsh?
Yes, I just wanted to remind Council, City Council, this is a sort of follow-up presentation with a few more details than the first presentation that was given, I think, back in October or November of last year. It is a possible way for us to consider moving forward with the financing and construction of the city public works facility. We have been meeting on a regular basis with NDC and our design folks, and all that stuff is coming together, and Council will probably be presented with specifics on the project, probably in September, not maybe July, but probably in September now. But we thought it was the right time to have NDC come back and get into a little more specifics on exactly how this alternative financing structure works, which is a little different from the traditional public bid, WICs law, public works projects. So I turn it over to the Commissioner of Development to introduce Dan and give his presentation.
Good evening, and thank you for having us here. Dan Marsh from NDC is here with us as the City Manager described. He is here to talk about a financing option for the potential relocation of the city yard. So, Dan?
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Mayor, members of Council, thank you for inviting me. We have a very brief presentation this evening. As the City Manager said, we're going to talk about the conceptual way of, one way of financing and constructing the new DPW facility. And I apologize, I have terrible allergies today for some reason, and if I sound a little bit hoarse or something, I'll blame it on the allergies. But the goal is to allow for the construction of a new DPW facility and yard on Beachwood Avenue on a site that is situated underneath and near the New York State thruway, a site which you probably are very familiar with, to accelerate the design and development process to meet your goals and objectives. We understand that you are currently negotiating with Forest City about the acquisition of the existing DPW yard, and we know that there are certain time constraints there. So we've been working very closely with your design consultant and with city staff to try to come up with a way that enables us to get the project, if you choose to go and finance it in this manner, to get the project up and operational, to be occupied by the city in advance of the start date for the work that Forest City would be undertaking on the existing Echo Bay DPW site. Also, a process that ensures that you are in control of the facility but are not financing it directly. The benefit of this particular process is that we are working to try to facilitate the design of a facility that specifically meets your needs while at the same time accelerating that process to meet the timing goals that you have, but more importantly, to get the best possible construction pricing and locking that pricing in under a guaranteed maximum price contract. So if you chose to do this particular project in this way, in fact, there would be a mechanism in there to control cost and to control time, and that would be something that's very important because many times municipal projects run over in time and in budget as well. Now, to do this, we would propose to use a local development corporation financing vehicle and still use the City of New Rochelle's IDA. A local development corporation is an entity that was recently formed, Commissioner, within the last year in the City of New Rochelle. It's formed under Section 1411 of the New York State Not-for-Profit Law, and it has the ability to do many things. One of those things is to be a conduit issuer of bonds. And those bonds would be revenue bonds, not general obligation bonds, and they would be issued through the local development corporation and would be fully tax exempt. So they would share the benefit of a lower interest rate. In order to do it, unfortunately, everything that is designed to deal with some of the complexities of developing projects in New York State tends in and of itself to be complex as well. So I'm going to walk you through a couple slides here that sort of outline the cast of players who would be involved in this process. And of course, the most important is the City of New Rochelle. It is your facility, and you will have to enjoy the use of that facility for many, many years to come, and we want to make sure that it's designed to meet your needs and fits the needs of the community. But in order to build this particular project, there needs to be an assembly of certain parcels of property that would be, in some cases, reutilized, in other cases demolished for a new construction portion of the project. So one of the city's responsibilities would be to acquire the site through a negotiation process with the landholders. To date, the city has been supervising the design of the project using DPW staff and using development, economic development staff, and the outside architect that you've retained in order to design the facility. So that work, as the City Manager said, has been ongoing for several months now, and we have not reached a conclusion, but it is a process that is well underway, and everyone is very actively participating in trying to determine what this facility will be and what it will contain. Now, in order to effectuate the actual financing, the land needs to find its way to the local development corporation. So once the property is acquired, the New Rochelle Local Development Corporation, who will be the issuer of the bonds, will in fact receive the land from the city and will enter into a series of land leases that would allow eventually for the project to be constructed. And the goal here is to construct it by controlling costs, controlling time, but most importantly, to have this building revert to the City of New Rochelle at a time when the bonds are retired at no cost to you. So you're not financing it twice, you're not financing and buying it, it's just another way to use tax-exempt bonds in order to build a facility that meets your needs. Now, we've been part of these discussions, and we are one option. There are other options that you can look at. You could look at a general obligation bond and do this project under a general municipal bid process. But the City Manager has asked us to weigh in on other ways that we've seen projects like this developed around the country and around New York State. So we would step into the role, if selected by you and asked by you to do this, to actually manage the whole process and to create an entity that would actually be the recipient of the bonds and construct the facility. If you go to the next slide. The New Rochelle Local Development Corporation, as we said before, is controlled by you. It's a subset of the -- The New Rochelle Local Development Corporation would ultimately issue what are called 501(c)(3) bonds. Those are tax-exempt bonds used by a nonprofit in order to build a facility that would lessen your governmental burden, and your burden is to build a DPW site to serve the needs of the City of New Rochelle. The LDC would own the Beachwood Avenue site, it would never leave sort of public control. The LDC would issue tax-exempt bonds, and those bonds would be used to build the facility under a guaranteed maximum price contract, which we, if we were selected to do it, would guarantee price and time to the city. The bond council that's been working and helped set up the LDC is Robinson &amp; Cole, and we have Alan Fox here this evening from Robinson &amp; Cole, who is available to answer any questions you may have relating to the formation of the LDC, its powers, and its abilities to work under New York State statute. But it's a mechanism that's been used in many places around the state, and it is in fact a way for 501(c)(3) projects to be financed since the IDA can no longer do those because the civic facility law sunsetted many, many years ago, and the state legislature never renewed it. So this is one of the ways that 501(c)(3) nonprofit bonds can in fact be issued in the state of New York. So the City of New Rochelle, the local development corporation, sort of the two key players so far. What we would do is we would create a not-for-profit corporation that would be the recipient of the bonds issued by the local development corporation. It would be controlled by us, and we would admit at least one member appointed by the city to sit on the board to make sure that we were running the corporation in compliance with the needs and desires of the city. We would actually sublease the land from the local development corporation, and on that land, we would build the building. We are responsible for time and budget. Once the bond issue, once it goes to market, it is our responsibility to deliver that building for exactly the amount of money that we have in the budget to meet your specifications and your needs, and if there are savings, we will give those savings back to you after we would share some of those potentially with the construction manager for doing a good job on the facility. So anything that's saved below that GMP price would go back to the benefit of the city, or at least a large portion of it would. The DPW through the city would sublease the facility from us and would operate it just like you would operate a normal city building. It is, for all intents and purposes, your building, it just happens to be leased from us, but you would operate it exactly like you operate your current facilities. Go to the next slide. Now, there are a couple other entities that we are going to introduce to this financing strategy in order to take advantage of lowering cost. In New York State, there is a requirement to pay a mortgage recording tax to the county. In New York State, industrial development agencies have the ability to exempt a project from that mortgage recording tax, which is several hundred thousand dollars on this transaction. So we have introduced a for-profit entity controlled by us, which we call Community Development Group, DPW. Not a very catchy name, but it is designed to actually interact with a sublease with the New Rochelle Industrial Development Agency in order to pass the land to the agency and back to the project, and that would allow us to exempt the mortgage, the project from mortgage recording tax. So it is a way that we've been working with Robinson &amp; Cole to save some more money for the project, and it certainly is an expense that we don't think the City of New Rochelle should have to pay on a municipal building. So those are the participants in the project. And if we go to the next slide, there are a series of documents that become part of the transaction. And they're sort of standard, but I want to stress the fact that it is a guaranteed maximum price contract. We will control the cost and we will control the time. Now, if we go to the next slide, you actually see sort of a schematic diagram of how all the parties come together. And you can see that the City of New Rochelle, on the right-hand side, assembles the land and takes the design of the project through the issuance of a guaranteed maximum price or a guaranteed maximum price. That is what the City Manager was referring to when he said that we would come back to you with more, with specific details on what the cost of this project would be. The land is transferred to the 1411 Local Development Corporation that you've just set up, the New Rochelle Local Development Corporation, the box in the middle. That particular corporation would ground lease the land to the not-for-profit, which is the box at the lower left-hand side, Community Development Properties, who would then sublease it to the for-profit, who would then sub-sublease it to the IDA. And that is there specifically to avoid mortgage recording tax. So I hope it is not something that appears too complicated because it is done all the time with IDAs, it just isn't done in this particular fashion for a public project like this. The bonds are issued by the New Rochelle Local Development Corporation, and the proceeds go to Community Development Properties, which is the not-for-profit. We construct the project, and we make it available by the fourth quarter of 2014, and the city enters into a lease for the facility. And that lease would be for a period that we still haven't decided what is the right time period, but eventually what would happen is the ground leases would unravel, and in fact, the property would revert once the bonds are paid off to the city, and it would be a normal municipal building at that time. Go to the last slide. It sort of summarizes that. You control the facility under a long-term lease, you use it like you would use any other facility. Lease payments are used to make bond payments, and when the bonds are retired, then the chain of leases will disappear and the facility will revert back to the City of New Rochelle. It's a simplification of the actual structure, but that's how it would work, and it's intended to benefit you and not add additional costs to the project. So that's what the City Manager has been looking at as one of the options, and we've developed it to a point where we know it can be done, and we know it can be done fairly effectively and efficiently, and that's something that he plans to bring back through your consideration among other options for later day.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Allergies or not, you were able to speak with great clarity, and we appreciate that.
Thank you.
I'll observe that, I think this may seem like a particularly complicated structure, one to the next, to the next, to the next, and of course, it's appropriate and important that you spell it out in this fashion because the council deserves an opportunity to understand fully how this mechanism would work, and so does the public. But I think it's critical to underline a point that you made, and that is, whatever the complexity of the financing structure, in the end, it's pretty simple. There's no difference whatsoever from the perspective of the Department of Public Works and its operations.
That's correct.
No difference whatsoever from the perspective of the public, which will utilize those services. The only question for the City Council, and we don't have the information yet to answer that question, is whether this is or is not a more sensible means of financing the project than the traditional issuance of bonds. As Council knows, we've already authorized that traditional mechanism, and so once we have some more hard data, we will then be given the option of switching over to this alternative means. And I would imagine that'll be based on a straight judgment of what happens to be in the best interest of the taxpayers of New Rochelle. And the theoretical advantage here is we get certainty and predictability without having to worry about change orders or the unexpected sort of emerging in a way which increases costs as a project proceeds, and that's the benefit of the guaranteed maximum price.
Right, and there are, you know, it is not exactly like your normal municipal bid. I mean, some of the costs upfront are a little bit higher. The interest rate will be a little bit higher, it always is, but the added benefit of controlling cost and time should more than adequately compensate for those higher numbers, and I think that's a very important point for you to make, Mayor.
And so by the time the council is called upon to make a decision, staff in consultation with NDC, I presume, will have those numbers laid out for us so we can do a clear and reasonable apples-to-apples comparison between the choices and make the judgment that we consider to be in the interest of our constituents. Yes?
That's the plan.
Okay, very good. So Councilmember Rackman and then --
In this type of a structure, who sets the maximum price?
The construction manager, who would be employed by us, would guarantee that price. They would set it. But there would be, they are not performing any of the work. They would be bidding out each of the individual trades or sub-trades, and those bids would be analyzed, and they would select the most competitive of those. The beauty of the construction manager at risk for a guaranteed maximum price is that once they set that price, if they should go over on one of these, they in fact have to provide that service at that price for us. So we've actually fixed it in time. There are benefits that potentially could offer savings, but the most important thing is it will never go above that number.
Okay, now, we, okay, we come to you, this is the, this is what we want it to look like, this is what we're expecting, these are the specs on the buildings, et cetera. You guys, your construction manager sets the maximum price?
That's correct, based upon your design.
Based on the design. There are, you know, four months into construction, a glitch comes up, now the design has to be changed. It's going to cost more money. Now what happens?
That's our responsibility.
So even if the design needs to be changed, if something has to be shifted around?
If you, if you make, if the City of New Rochelle makes that decision, we didn't really want the salt dome here, we wanted it over here. You know, that would be something that would be an extra cost, but if in fact the salt dome cost a dollar in our budget and was actually five dollars in the bid, that's our responsibility.
Okay, but now let's say they start the construction, and for some reason, logistically, the salt dome cannot be here and has to be moved.
That's our responsibility.
Okay.
Yeah, that's our responsibility. Our construction manager would have subsurface borings to look at, they would know the suitability of the soils, they would know all that information. So except for a design change that your DPW may want because trucks need to go around or something, and they didn't think about that, then any change that's necessitated by conditions on the site other than your use would be our responsibility.
That's an unlikely scenario. The design will be finalized by our design consultant, who has conducted and is continuing to conduct numerous conversations with our own bureau heads and the people that will be operating out of the facility. So it would be unusual for them to decide halfway into a project that they need to turn left instead of right.
Okay.
I wouldn't be happy if they did.
Do we get, this I guess is for Mr. Stone, do we, when we get our design, will they give us some kind of estimate on what they, what they project the cost would be prior to us submitting this?
What will happen is our professional, the way I envisioned it, is our professional consultant, the design person, will come forward, and I think will have an estimated cost for a traditional public works project as we would normally do it if we issued our own bonds. This will be the guaranteed price, whether it's higher, lower, the same. That will be determined as the design is completed, and the council then will have the information to decide whether maybe it's worth a little more to guarantee that it won't be a lot more, or maybe it's not worth that risk. You know, we don't know what the final numbers are, but as you know, in a traditional project, a lot of things that happen may result in work orders, may result, change orders may result in additional costs. This may be a little more upfront, but it guarantees that it won't be any more than that. So that's all, we have to put all those numbers together and give you enough information to make the determination that you feel is in the best interest of the city. I suspect we'll make a recommendation one way or the other.
Um.
Did I get, I got that right, Dan?
Yes, and you know, if it does come in below what is, what is the guaranteed maximum price at the time you accept it, should you accept it? And let's say it comes in for a hundred thousand dollars less, then the majority of that hundred thousand goes back to you to use for whatever. I mean, in a normal private-public partnership, that would go to the developer, but since we're a not-for-profit, we don't want to take that money out of the city, so it would go back to you.
Traditionally, traditionally, in arrangement like this, what percentage have come in on budget, what percentage have come in over, in your experience?
For the projects that I have managed personally, I mean, we have a little over $2.2 billion in projects, not all of which I manage personally, but for the ones that I managed, most of them have come in on the base contract number without add-ons that were requested by the client at numbers below what the GMP was. Now, there is going to be a little bit of a fudge factor in the GMP because there --
You have to protect yourselves.
Well, it's, not only that, we're doing it at a point when the construction drawings are not 100% complete. So, you know, we'll get closer to that, but, you know, but it allows it to move quickly, and that, and as the drawings are completed, you know, we will be able to hopefully buy the price of the project at a lesser cost, but we don't know.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Tarantino?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. One of them is that, what's the timeframe of the bonds?
We would look at, and we talked about that the other day with the City Manager, we would, we would look at three options, 20, 25, and 30 years.
Okay, and then the lease, whatever that is, the lease would end simultaneously with the bonds?
Well, I can't play it, although I play an attorney during the daytime on television, if I answer that, I probably will get in trouble. There will be, the lease will be nominally longer, okay, than the bond term. How much longer it is, I'd have to defer to Mr. Fox. But it would have no impact on the city because the lease rate would either drop to zero or would continue to be paid and then rebate it 100% to the city. So we don't want this to be, if you choose this option, we don't want it to be a financed lease transaction or a general obligation lease transaction. So the lease term will be nominally longer than the bond term, but it will have no financial impact on the city, and you still occupy it as if you owned it anyway.
And these bonds, there would be no opportunity to refinance them?
Yeah, there would be.
They would be?
Yeah, on several projects, we've done refundings, yeah.
Okay, that was one question. The other one was about the building, you said, you said here, City of New Rochelle effectively controls and operates the DPW facility. Does that mean we maintain it, we're responsible for the structural facility, or is that done by an outside company?
The assumption that we've been given by the City Manager is that it's a true net-net-net lease, that the city would operate it and do general maintenance and things like that on the facility as if you owned it. The menu of options is open, you know, and, you know, in some cases, we manage buildings long-term, and we provide maintenance long-term. Most of our municipal buildings, however, are net-net leased to the municipality.
Would there be an opportunity for you to give us that opportunity to see what the cost would be for somebody to maintain the building? And the reason I'm saying this, City Manager has said many times that we're not very good at maintaining properties, and the concern is that you have a building that you're paying a lease payment on, and then 10 years down the road, we run into some major issues because we haven't properly maintained the property, and now we have to go and borrow money to repair things that we didn't anticipate at that time. So, you know, just be an option that would be curious to know.
It's an option, and we would talk to the City Manager and staff about that, it could be.
Okay, and the other one, the other, there are other properties that obviously have to be purchased. Is that done through your group, or is that done before you get involved?
I defer to the City Manager and ask Lena about that.
We would have to do that.
We would have to, okay.
In fact, you've actually authorized us to start the process on the properties that we would need.
Okay, okay, I have no other questions.
Now, a point though would be that if you chose to do that, we would include in our bond issue the reimbursement for those, the acquisition of those properties. So, I mean, what, you know, that could be, that, it's anticipated that that would be part of the bond issue, so if the city were to go out and acquire, then they would be included in the bond issue more than likely.
Just want to follow up on something. When we were talking about the buildings themselves and structures, what, how do you warranty these buildings? Because after they're built, you know, if you have structural issues with the building, for how long before the so-called warranty runs out?
Well, there's standard, there's standard warranties on equipment roofs and things like that. I mean, roofs can be 20 or 20 or more years. If there's a construction defect that appears five years down the road, we would be working with the construction manager to go back and fix that, and sometimes it takes a while for those things to occur. We've been talking to a construction manager who we've worked with in the past, and we just, we did a magnet school in the City of Hartford four, five years ago, and there were some drain problems in the laboratories, and there was a parking lot surface problem, and we went back and with that construction manager, and they repaired that. So if it's a construction defect, then it would go for a fairly long time, not under any given warranty or state law. It's just the way that the construction managers that we work with like to keep their reputation strong. So, I mean, if it's just normal wear and tear, no, but if it's a construction defect, it could be a fairly long time.
Thank you.
That can be fixed.
I just want to go back to the leasing and the maintenance of it. Now, you said that, I think you said that you can incorporate cost into the bond to cover some maintenance, is that correct?
No, we would, we could incorporate the cost in the bond to reimburse you for the acquisition of the property. We could incorporate in the lease a number, a number that would include some sort of maintenance and repair.
The lease payment would be higher if they were --
The lease payment would be slightly higher to do that.
Understood, and if we have a 30-year lease, and you just mentioned a roof that lasts 20 years, and of course, within 20 years, we're going to be looking to replace a roof when we still have a 10-year lease on the property.
Right. Now, what, it doesn't usually happen with facilities like this, but when we do a laboratory, a dormitory, an office building, or something like that, a city hall, many times, we will be involved in supervising the operation of that facility and maintaining it. So we build a budget, and the reason that we do, the structure that we do where we admit a member of the community, the city, to -- we admit a member of the, of the community, the city, to our board is that certain decisions, like capital replacements, repairs, budgets, need to, need unanimous consent of the board, which would mean the city, the city representative would have to vote for it as well. And that's important for a lot of reasons, one of which is although you don't own it, we want to give you a say in, in what happens to the building. Number two, the bond buyers are going to want to know that we cannot take a unilateral action and throw this building into bankruptcy and negatively impact them and you. So there are certain, what we call life events that need to be unanimous, not just a simple majority.
When we give you the menu of options, different lease periods will be part of that menu.
Right.
Because obviously the longer, the shorter, the, the shorter the lease period, the more expensive the lease cost is each year.
Right. That's what I assume, right. So we'll have options available to us based on the years of lease.
Yeah. And our, we're starting out with a, with a base assumption that the lease would, would roughly, would have, would equal the debt service payments plus a very small asset management fee that we would use to do our financial statements and, and report to the bondholders and things like that. So it's basically debt service.
The other question now is that we have an outside consultant who's designing the art and they're in conjunction with our, our DPW team in City Hall.
Yes.
Do you also have a design team that over, that reviews it or you just basically go on the design that is presented to you?
No.
When you, when you go out for bids as far as construction?
Yeah. What we would propose is we would, we would use your designer for that. No sense in duplicating those costs. What would eventually happen though, because we would need certain privity with that designer to make sure that it's designed to the standards that, that you expect and we expect. So at some point in time, should you choose to do this, we will take over that contract and we will include that cost in our budget and we will still seek input from the DPW and from the city as part of the design, but we need to control the architect because we need to make certain decisions to ensure that the building is built.
And that's, that's my point, right. So you, you would be involved with that point until, once you go out to.
Yeah, we, we would, we would take it over.
I mean, since you have multiple projects that are on your plate or have completed, you have a lot more expertise in that field when you go out to bid it out.
Yeah. We're not construction folks nor are redesign folks. We're project development and finance.
I understand, but the people that are working for you will be.
Yes, the people who are working for us will be.
In fact, Dan, they are, they are in contact with our, they're in regular contact with our design consultant.
Right. We, we have meetings at least once a week and sometimes more with them, so.
Okay. One more last question, I hope you can answer this, but if we go through the local development corporation, how does that bond debt, because we'll be paying a lease payment to you on a yearly basis, how does that bond debt reflect on our budget? Do we see that bond debt?
I think, I think your finance department would have to answer that question whether it's, is considered debt of the city. I, I don't believe it is. I believe the way that Gazbi.
So this won't appear as a long-term bond debt from the city standpoint?
Well, actually it'll, it'll, it'll appear as a lease.
So it'll, it'll appear as a lease payment, clause of operating budget?
Right. And, and the rating agencies will look at it as a long-term obligation, but it will be a contingent liability for the year after the lease payment is due and every year thereafter. But it, but Standard and Poor's and Moody's would look at it as a financial obligation. So it's not, you know, it may not appear as, as debt under, you know, under your financial statements, but it'll be a financial obligation that will be long-term, subject to annual budget and appropriation.
May I interject something on that? This is, in fact, this is not a, a new model for us. You may recall that the New Rock Garage was originally financed by the city through annual lease payments.
That's correct.
And we recently transitioned.
Refinanced and paid a one-to-one term bond.
And actually got a lower annual rate, but the debt went onto our books. So it's, in terms of annual.
We refinanced on the general obligation bond.
Correct. Because, because that was in our financial interests.
That's correct.
Under those specific circumstances.
So again, going here, general obligation bonds seem to be low interest at this point because we just refinanced some long-term bond debts to save money, but yet we're taking a direction away from general obligation. And I understand the main premise here is to control cost.
Correct.
That was, that's the main premise here.
Time and cost.
Right. Okay. But I, I just want to make sure I understand that it, I mean, the cost is going to be reflected in our budget. I want to make sure that it's reflected in long-term bond debt, which we're not sure it will be reflected.
I believe that it will show up and I.
But it will, it will be reflected as a payment because.
Yeah, it, it will be a contingent liability beyond the year in which the current lease payment is due.
Okay.
So, but it will, it will carry as a, a long-term obligation to the city, yeah.
Thank you. Councilmember Patel?
Yeah, I have a series of questions. In order for us to get an analysis of various options, who's going to provide the independent analysis of them so we can make an informed decision? Are you going to have someone outside look at the various options internally, we'll do it? I just want to know. I'm sorry. We will, staff. Okay. When do you think we'll be getting that?
This will probably be brought to you, I don't know when you'll get it. The decision will be probably in September, I'm guessing. So you'll probably get, I could give it to you the day before the meeting, probably have to have several weeks in advance and not necessarily have to approve it in September. It could be, take as long as you need to analyze it and make a decision.
If you want to hear some questions about the distinction between the normal financing, which we already approved, and this kind of structure. First, as I understand it, the bond resolutions which you authorize would have to be rescinded, is that correct? If we adopted this?
Yes.
And that would be a five vote or a four vote to rescind it?
No.
Four votes. And.
We understand, we, we have an issue, bonds, I don't believe, but we are.
But we authorize, we are incurring costs now for the design.
Right, right. But if we authorize something, I would assume that we rescind the authorization so it wouldn't, down the road, issue bonds.
My point is only that we are using some of that money for the design.
And secondly, if we vote to approve this, is it a four vote or a five vote?
Four.
Okay. And another question is if we, if you do the construction, which law does not apply?
It does not apply.
That's correct. All right. Is there, and that, I'd like to see that quantified at some point, as town residents think will say as a result of that, because that goes to cost as well, doesn't it?
We've had, we've asked our, our, we're trying to narrow it down, we've asked our design people who I think base anywhere between 5 and 15% of the savings if you don't have to use the works.
All right. Another issue is if we have to go out, we have to give it to the lowest responsible bidder. You're not required to do that, is that correct?
No, but we would, we would still bid each of the trades.
You're not legally required to do it.
That's correct, yes.
So when you decide who could do the construction, you could probably, in terms of the project, show some preference if you can within the certain framework to companies, people who live in this area.
Yes.
Because it's very important that we increase employment and do that locally. I think that's something you could do.
To, to the extent that, that there are subcontractors that are capable financially.
I understand that, I understand that.
We try to do that in our projects. We try to include as, as many local contractors as we can.
And another question, you mentioned that you're in effect guaranteeing the cost.
Mm-hmm.
And obviously, you know, we're hoping the economy's going to continue moving along in the various pace, but we get another bump in the road like 2008, 2009. What financial guarantee do you have insurance? What do you do in order to make sure that should there be a significant bump in the economy, not necessarily in terms of external forces, that you're able to complete it and not have us having, have finished project?
Well, we, we would have a surety bond to, to back, to backstop that. We would rely upon the strength of our construction manager and we have very rigorous standards for that. We, we want only large, very, you know, successful and deep balance.
I understand that, I understand that. I'm not equipping with you on that, but my concern is if you hit an economic, you know, wall like we did a few years ago, even some of the strongest companies cannot succeed.
No.
And my question is, other than the fact that you're dealing with a company that's a really strong company, what other security can you provide to assure us?
We would have a completion bond.
Okay. Okay. Let's see. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Rice?
The end date you said would be projected to be fourth quarter 2014?
Yes.
What would the corresponding start date be with that?
September, October of this year.
And, um, so you, the construction manager would oversee the project itself?
Yes, the construction manager would be our representative and would oversee and hold all the subcontracts for us.
Okay. And as it relates to subcontractors and hiring, I know one of the things that we're trying to do here in the city is provide employment for local residents in the construction trades. Would that be a function of you, your group or the construction manager or both?
It would be both of us. I mean, if you, if you made certain requirements to.
And us.
And us.
And us. Yeah. Yeah, and, and the city.
And this would be union work?
We suspect that it will be union, yes. We, I mean, we're not, we're, we're looking at pricing.
Okay.
As if it was a union job. We, most of our larger jobs are union jobs.
It'd be hard to imagine, a project like this.
Yeah, I mean, I, it's too large of a project in an area that, that is very strong with unions. I don't think that we would ever try to do anything else.
Just a quick one.
Sure.
One thing, this property has some mitigation issues or hazardous material that's on it.
We're trying to ascertain what's there now.
How does this play out now? Because we had the consultant here making the presentation.
Right.
He basically said that contamination, there is some contamination there, but if the land's undisturbed, it's not an issue, but you're going to do construction, so you're going to disturb the land.
Right.
So how, just tell me how this plays out with you in conjunction with the contamination and conjunction with the consultant.
Obviously, we want to get to a point where we know precisely what's there and that's, and there are borings that are going to be done on the site. We'll figure that out. Without knowing what that result is or if there are any unknowns that, that the engineer is going to say, we just can't determine whether in this corner there's anything. It's kind of hard for me to, to answer, but, but our, our goal is to, is to include in the GMP, a number that is sufficient to be able to remediate the, whatever is on that site, as determined by the environmental engineer.
Okay. So you're going to get.
And we will, and we will have a contingency for that as well. So that's something that we will, you know, that we will look at very closely.
But it is. Two, two things I'll, I'll add to that. One, what you're referring to, Councilman Tran Gucci, was the original site, there are additional sites now that we are purchasing that are going to have to have environmental testing.